Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go to 7E, the Code of Arms and the Compliance Reporting. As you now understand, we are the guarantor that the process has been followed properly, and it requires a motion of counsel to approve the quarterly compliance report.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor, say it. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. So Jeff, you can submit that report.
Sounds good.
Shem, do you want to do your presentation on the Code of Arms? I hope that you all have read that, and I hope that visually you have an understanding of what's happening, where that little weasel is going to be, where the picture is of the lion on the top of a crown, there would be the weasel on the top of a mountain. And the weasel represents the Blood Tribe.
Yeah, after consulting Blood Tribe, they indicated that the name Blood Tribe actually doesn't come from Blackfoot, it comes from the Cree. When Westerners were traveling west, they asked the Cree, "Okay, what's the tribe to the west of you?" And they referred to them as the Bloods, whereas the Blackfoot competitors actually referred to the Blood Tribe as the Many Chiefs Tribe or the Weasel People because they always used the weasel skins in their regalia. So they always dressed up in weasel skins, they called them the Weasel People. So for those of you who aren't aware, for the Town of Cardston for the past year has been communicating with the Canadian Heraldic Authority, submitted an application to receive armorial bearings from the Crown. And the point in the process which we're at right now is the design development phase. So what you have in your agenda packages was the concept proposal for our armorial bearings. And at this point, it's just a written description. So prior to this phase, we were in the concept development phase, which was we struck an ad hoc committee, we had Counsel Edmunds and David Innes and other members of the Historical Society, we met, just to discuss what Cardston has done to contribute to our country. And some items they identified were the irrigation canal that the Romans from Utah brought up here when they settled and basically revolutionized agriculture in this area. Prior to the irrigation canal, this whole area was known as the Paliser Triangle because it was just arid land and they said, "Nothing will grow here, it's not good for farming." Another points they identified were just the significant contribution of the church in Cardston with the temple and formation of the first stake in Canada. So when you're reading through this technical description, first of all, the technical description is in a dialect of English known as Blaison, which is the language of heraldry. So it's a very traditional old English language. And then it gives you the visual description of what each element or tincture, as they refer to it in heraldry, looks like, as well as an explanation of the symbolism. So is everybody able to visualize what the Code of Arms, the proposed Code of Arms is going to look like?
Shem, the only thing that I wondered is, where is that flying bee going to be? It sits on a badge, but what does that refer as a badge here?
So our armorial bearings comes in more than one element. So our flag is going to be separate from our crest, and a badge is separate from the flag. So there's three different elements here.
But in the picture, give me a little bit of a sense. The pictures that are provided there that are not ours...
They provided these pictures for counsel to decide whether or not they want to have the tincture of a helmet incorporated in the design. He provided this for reference, if you incorporate a helmet...
A helmet tattoo.
Yeah, you're looking at the same one. You notice the one on the left has a helmet over on top of the shield, and the one on the right does not. He provided those images to illustrate that if you choose not to have a helmet, there's more room to make the crest larger. So the crest, if you look at County Annapolis, they have the lion's head on top of, looks like a ball of pickets or spears.
It's levitating.
So our crest, the proposed tinctures for our crest are a hill, and standing on top of the hill, a weasel facing forward, representing the Weasel People or the Blood Tribe, standing on top... The hill represents Chief Mountain.
Overlooking the traditional territory.
Because the Blood Tribe elders tell their youth, you know, home is where you can see Chief Mountain. If you can't see Chief Mountain, you're not home. So everywhere you can see Chief Mountain, that's considered traditional Blackfoot territory. So from top of Chief Mountain, you can see all of Blackfoot territory. So that's the symbolism behind the crest, you know, the weasel standing on top of the hill, Chief Mountain, symbolizing that we're in the realm of traditional Blackfoot territory. The shield is a wagon wheel on a gold field, so the gold field representing agriculture producing crops in what was supposedly supposed to be the area of Paliser's triangle. And inset from the border is the blue border, which is representing the irrigation canal, which was dug by the settlers. And at each corner of the shield, so on the top right, top left, and the bottom, are billets, which is basically a vertical rectangle, and the billets are supposed to be representative of the communities that the irrigation canal flowed through. So we've got the irrigation canal flowing through the communities and making, you know, this field of gold, gold crop. And then the wheel in the center, so of course symbolic of...
The pioneers.
Yeah, the pioneers, last wagon train, migration, and Remington Carriage Museum.
Right.
That's our shield.
And the motto has something to do with our faith, more or less, the sense that trust in God.
Yeah, we... In our committee, we suggested a number of possible mottos, and one we kind of settled upon was faith endures. They modified it to trust endures, and their justification being trust is a word applicable in several respects, trust in God is faith. So trust endures was their suggestion.
Yeah, that's okay.
Jeff, why can't... Or Shem, why could they not put just an outline of Chief Mountain instead of a hill? Nobody alluded to a hill being Chief Mountain.
One thing about Code of Arms is the artwork, Code of Arms is meant to last forever. The artwork, however, is not meant to be eternal. If you look at Canada's Code of Arms, the artwork has been updated with the times. So the symbolic element is a hill, a weasel standing on the hill. There's nothing saying that down the road we can't update the artwork and make the hill now like the shape of Chief Mountain. The point is that there's a hill there, but we could, if they, you know, they send us the painted artwork, and it's just a grassy hill, like, you know...
Right, couldn't we, wouldn't the First Nation... Appreciate more Chief Mountain?
I've already, you noticed in the email I got from Darryl, they require a resolution from council as well as a signed letter from Blood Tribe Council approving the use of the elements in our Code of Arms.
Yeah, yeah.
I sent that letter to Blood Tribe on October 11th.
Did you get an answer?
No, not yet. I've contacted them a couple, I've spoken with Marcel too, he's going to follow up. I'm not sure when their most recent council meeting is.
Yeah, yeah, right, right now.
But I sent them the letter, all they really have to do is put it on the letterhead and sign it and send it back. But I did mention to them, it's like, this is the, you know, the design development phase. So in his email, he indicates that this proposal, this is their initial proposal, but it's also up for, all the elements here are up for discussion. Because, like, the reasons, one of the reasons this process takes long is because they don't move forward until both parties are satisfied, so us and the Chief Herald.
I'm just wondering then, if the representation we have right now of our hill in our Cardston kind of flag, if that could be possibly provided as what we have presently?
We could, we could send it back and say we prefer that that hill be that hill.
It's like a chief.
You know, I mean, we, we understand that hill too.
I was going to say, if you put a hill and don't put Chief Mountain, you're going to have a lot of flack from the people, not only of Cardston, from people that have lived here, people all over the area.
What's Cardston? It's Cardston.
That's Cardston.
People that live in Cardston know that Chief Mountain.
That's the website, it's all part of it.
I mean, it's very symbolic to us.
It's the culture.
A hill was going to be...
Initially, Chief Mountain wasn't even up for consideration, because it's not in Canada.
It's in Montana.
That's okay.
We got the view, they have the mountain, we have the view.
It does, because this is an honor from the Canadian Crown. We had, I had to, after having this discussion with Blood Tribe and with our assembly and Herald, I told them, this is hugely important for the Blood Tribe to have this symbol because of, you know, Cardston being in their traditional territory and not being a homeless, you can see Chief Mountain. So I had to go that angle just to get Chief Mountain, you know, considered as part of our design. Because initially, he straight up said, "Chief Mountain's not going to be considered because it's not in Canada."
Well...
So we at least got it in the design.
I was going to say, we're paying the bill.
And as I said...
Well, yeah, but it's heraldry, it has to be Canadian.
As I said...
Doesn't matter.
It is our music.
It's from Canada.
Well, the, like Shem referred to it, when it comes to heraldic badges, there's very specific rules, and it doesn't matter what you think.
Comes from the Middle Ages, so you don't think it's going to change today, right?
If you reference his...
Counselor?
Can I ask, what was the genesis of this one? Like, why did we head down this road?
That's a very good question.
Well, the answer is actually me. I started on here and...
So it's your fault.
Well, I went through the process at the University of Lethbridge. We had a Code of Arms, but then our development office found out that it's not legitimate. I mean, Code of Arms, you can't just doodle one up and adopt it as a Code of Arms. It all goes back into addition with the Crown in Canada. Code of Arms is an honor bestowed to a corporation or an individual by the Crown. And it's hugely symbolic, very traditional, and when I got here, I was actually surprised personally to find out that Cardston, being as old as it is, did not have a Code of Arms. We were going through policies and biologies and rebranding our documents, and I wanted to put our Code of Arms on the documents, kind of sealed them, and we didn't, we didn't have them. So I presented to council and proposed applying to the Canadian Heraldic Authority to be awarded armorial bearings, and council by resolution decided that's what they wanted to do. The genesis was me coming to council and asking if they wanted to be, to receive an honor from the Crown.
I have a sound, we exist in their books. We exist in their books.
Okay.
Yeah, the Code of Arms, it's registered in the Registry of Arms in, at the Canadian Heraldic Authority in Ottawa. So you can go to the heraldry website for the Governor General and see all of the corporations who have received armorial bearings from the Crown, it's all registered there.
All right, essentially what we need to know is, are there any element others than maybe that hill that needs to be a little bit more customized to the landscape?
So if you reference his letters, it says, "At this stage of the process, this concept is being sent to you for the approval in principle by the town council and has not yet been drawn. The visual description is often enough for the image to be visualized. The next step would be to have one of your heraldic artists draw up the design. This would require a contract you sign in behalf of the town." And then it goes on to note that the Blood Tribe need to approve their use of their symbols. So we need to...
You need to know if you want a shield or not.
So right now, this is the written description, so the, well, yeah, he wants to know if you want to have a helmet on there.
Yeah, the hill, you will have, it's a helmet, yeah.
Yeah, so decide whether or not you want a helmet incorporated in the design. And then, you know, resolution of council, resolutions in the second paragraph of the email there, approving the design concept in principle. And right now, he's approving the description. So the description is weasel standing on top of the hill, which represents Chief Mountain. They will send us a drawing of the design for further scrutiny. And the process can last as long as you decide you want it to last, going back and forth with the Heraldic Authority, having them alter the design or changing elements. Right now, he has wanted resolution approving the description in principle, or if at this point, you're not satisfied with the elements which they have selected to incorporate, or the teachers they've decided to incorporate in their Code of Arms, now's the time to have that discussion and make that request of the authority.
Okay, can you tell me, maybe, Shem, if you don't mind?
Want me to continue with the description?
On those two, on those two pictures, is there a badge? And if so, where is it?
No, there's not a badge.
Okay, all right, so that's what I wanted to know, because I didn't see any. Okay. All right, so there is, the symbol is of the bee that is...
The bee in the triangle for the badge.
That was supposed on the badge. Is there any other place I could put something that represents that industry, like the beehive?
On the Code of Arms? You want to see that represented?
I don't know, I'm just thinking, if that represents industry, why lose that element?
Is it the bee or the beehive?
Well, they wanted to put a bee, but for the same idea. The bee represented that industry, yeah.
So the triangle, first of all, the visual description.
The bee symbol, there it is at the bottom of the place, of the page. The bee is a symbol of the LDS Church and represents industry and activity necessary to produce effective farming. So I'm wondering, do we want that badge? Maybe we want that badge.
Bee hive is a symbol of the LDS Church.
That's right.
It's not the bee, it's the bee hive.
I know.
So I don't know where they got that from, but if you look on any, any audience thing, it's a beehive.
Yes, correct.
It's not improper for them to give us our own identity?
Pardon me?
So, the beehive?
Yeah.
That is an LDS Church symbol. The bee is going to be Cardston's symbol. So it alludes to the beehive. It's the same species, the same concept.
Yeah, I mean, it's a habit of Allah, which means a flying bee, so...
But this is Cardston's Code of Arms. There are several other elements in there that represent the church, significantly the supporters, you know, it's, well, if you look at Town of High Level, they have a moose and another deer on the, supporting their Code of Arms. For our supporters, the Heraldic Authority has recommended two elk, golden elk, because the elk is the state animal of Utah. So the two golden elk, supporting the crest, symbolic of...
Right, representing the pioneers.
Support of the church for the Cardston pioneers.
Yeah, good. I love the bee, so if you want the bee, we have a badge, yes.
My question, I guess, is, I love the idea of having the shield. My only concern is, what's the point of it if it doesn't represent Cardston?
Pardon?
I love the idea of having the shield, I think it's a great idea, but my only, the flip side of it is, what's the point of having it though if it does not represent Cardston? If it does not have Old Chief on there, if it does not have certain aspects of our community, it may as well be a shield for High Level. It needs to be a shield representing, like, I mean, I love the weasels in there, I think those are great ideas, but...
Well, let's read the explanation of the symbolism for the shield.
I have.
So the shield is a carriage wheel within the gold field, representing farming in Cardston. So the field represents successive crops being grown, carriage wheel symbolizes travel by wagon train by the settlers to the stopping place, which was Cardston, and the Remington Carriage Museum in town.
Yeah, I like the carriage wheel.
Absolutely. I think there's just certain aspects that...
Every single element was gone over by the Heraldic Authority, the assembly Herald, other Herald, the chief Heraldic...
We, we won't be able to reproduce what's here. Let's put it this way, it's not the intent.
No.
And Chief Mountain is in the armorial bearings, it is there.
Yeah, I like the two from...
Yeah. Counselor, say it.
Shem, basically, this is, if we pass this motion, then they'll come up with a proposed...
They'll draw the design.
Right now, we can't visualize it, we can see the elements, but we can't visualize it.
And then we get the vote on the design afterwards.
Till the Heraldic artist actually draws it all up, there's no point getting all that shit.
Well, and that, at that point, I was going to say, then we go back to him and say, "This is what we want, not what you draw."
Well, essentially, you have to tell him that because it's costly to have and have this do, it doesn't come without a cost.
Yeah, the more times you tell your artist, "Do it again, do it again, do it again."
No, you have...
Sends you a new bill.
Yeah, you have a bill.
So, Shem, what you're saying is, is that basically the society has decided that this is what can be in our Code of Arms?
According to what they were provided.
Right.
The list we sent them was comprehensive.
Okay.
We, this has been an ongoing process for almost a year now. So we met with our ad hoc committee, we put down, you know, a list of what it was, everything, not specifically images, but elements that can be represented symbolically. So we identified, you know, top of the list was, you know, Card, Charles Card, Temple Chief Mountain, LDS Church, irrigation, because that was one of the biggest contributions the settlers in Cardston brought to Southern Alberta, was the irrigation technology from Utah to farm the landscape. And they dug a canal from here all the way out to, I forget, I think, and irrigating all of the communities between here and there. So we had a long list, we included global fauna, flora, and we sent this list to the Heraldic Authority and using those elements, as he says in his email, when developing a design, some principles that we follow as best we can, simplicity and symmetry. Simplicity involves the idea that all good ideas need to be incorporated into the design to create an attractive design. For many offered, we select only enough that will produce a unique design. So part of having a Code of Arms is having a unique design. If our design looked like everybody else's in Southern Alberta, we can see Chief Mountain, it wouldn't be unique. Counselor, now?
I just wanted to comment, Jeff, Shem, that they've, I think you've done a great job with the concepts and everything out here, and I like everything that I see here. The only, the only thing I really, the one thing I think is a must is the Chief Mountain design. Everything else in there incorporated, I love it, I really do, and I think your group has worked really hard, and you'd be commended for it.
And as I heard you, it's already in there.
Good, awesome.
Chief Mountain is in there, that our crest is a weasel standing on top of Chief Mountain.
Awesome, that's good.
Okay, all right, so that's good. Now, there is one, there is one item that we need, is to know from this council, do you want a badge with a bee, yes or no? It's $165 to have a badge, so what it is?
I don't feel like we need a badge.
Technically, we already have a resolution from council saying we're getting a badge.
Oh, well, perfect, then let's not worry about it.
Okay, tell me a little bit about this badge and the bee.
The badge, the badge is an element of the whole crest that we'll have, that is a symbol of industry for the settlers who came here and developed that portion of the land to make it very productive.
Just bring it back so I can see it.
Yeah, I'd like to see what it is, because I, obviously, I can't see it here.
Okay, all right, so you want to put a motion forward with our...
I'd like to.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve it in principle.
Resolution?
Resolution says that.
Yeah, perfect.
That's what I was going to say, yep.
Outline in the document.
Outline in the document.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, let's move on.
Awesome.
Thank you.
There, we have, we have the financial, this time around, I have asked Jeff to be a little bit more descriptive about what you see in financials, because if many of us are not going to the session that would be provided by the AUMA on financial, is it time now or never to get educated? So Jeff, go ahead.
So every month, you'll receive a financial statement for approval. It is normally delayed, like this one is, to two months prior. We have to wait a while to get a lot of our settlements in from NMAX on the electrical charges and the revenues and things like that. So you're getting Septembers in November, that's pretty consistent. Whether you go to the financial training or not, every town has a unique financial statement. It can be and contain what you as a council wish it to contain. I mean, obviously, there's some basic stuff to be there. We're going to provide you a financial statement and a balance sheet, and then quarterly, we're going to provide you with an investment report. And so what you have in front of you is the format that the previous council liked. You may also collectively like it, that's great, but certainly know that if there are pieces of this you don't like, or you wish were expanded upon, or left out, please tell me, we'll amend it accordingly. But your statement opens with a income statement. And so you have your revenues, and then you have your expenses, and then it should show you if you're making or losing money at the end, that's the point of it. They're grouped, remember the budget document you had with all those line items? Essentially, they're grouped into all these lines to try and summarize, otherwise you're getting a 16 to 18 page financial statement. So you see for revenues, of course, taxes and then user fees. And you can see that makes up, again, budgeted 4.767 million. And then what we do is we put where we're at year to date, that gives you the actual year to date. And then a lot of times, Hocken will put notes in the column saying, for example, if we look at electricity, we're at 80.7% of the budget, and this time last year, we were at 76.2. Just a little context of where we're at, if things are way behind a previous year or way ahead, and so he'll put some of those numbers on there.
Jeff, just as a point of clarification, what's called full budget is what the previous council had approved as the budget. And the actual is how much we have used of that budget or collected for revenue to match that budget we had approved.
So that goes down to the total of taxes and user fees, and then there's a number of transfers, other ways that we take in money. And then you see total revenues, 11.8 million, we're at 8.4 at this point in the year. By the way, I don't have any concerns about our position currently as per budget, I think we're very on track. Last year, on about $10 million, we came within, I think we were $120,000 under budget? So we run lean and fairly, we track it very carefully. And then, of course, you get into your expenses, and it starts with your...
Jeff, can I just stop you for a second? Can you explain to council the discrepancy between the two numbers, the net municipal taxes? There's a discrepancy of about $40,000 or some odd dollar. That is a taxes that have not yet been collected, correct?
So we will have some outstanding...
Yeah.
For sure, yeah.
And there is a three-year process in trying to recuperate...
Yeah, let me be clear, there's no bad debt in the municipality. You can't, there's no way to not pay your taxes. And the punishment is punitive, the recourse is difficult for those that choose not to, but we don't carry bad debt. We don't write off bad debt as a company would, because if you don't pay it, we take your house and sell it, which is really, really not where you want to go.
It has happened.
But you can always have recourse to claim it.
It has happened.
And I've done one in my two and a half years. And it's the only one in the nine years I've worked for the town, by the way.
It doesn't happen often.
And the home was vacant, so it's not like we were displacing someone either.
Counselor, say it.
Just a question, Jeff, in the revenue rental, is that, what is that? Is that cool, or is that something, is that land that we rent?
I'll tell you exactly here, one second, Counselor. I've got kind of the big breakdown of it all, but it is, we have civic center rentals, recreation general rent, ball diamonds, parks, things like that.
Even the pasture.
Pasture rentals, so what we do for grazing, and we had a land lease that's now done, but it was in 2017. We're leasing a chunk of, a parcel we owned to someone.
And the fire department?
And the fire department rents, so, yeah, the fire department, we have some money comes in from Alberta Health that goes towards that.
Agrodom for expenses, what is that?
Let me scroll there quick. Agrodom is essentially insurance, and let me tell you exactly. Just bear with me for one second.
It should be paid, there had, there had a piece of equipment, but...
Okay, we have, oh, I would need to look at this exact one, this one under the...
Okay, agrodoms... Agro Dome says material and machinery, but the machinery is zero.
I would need to look at the breakdown, councillor, the material. I believe it is their insurance. And we also have, we do some machine work for them through the year. So, we'll lend them equipment to do some things to help them out through the year as well. But I'd have to get back to you exactly on what that looks like.
Are we also providing additional funds for the, you know, for the agro dome, or is this yet?
No, I'll take that back. We do give them some funds to help pay for their Heritage Week events. So, we have some events-based funding. I believe it's $14,000, I believe. We give them every year to host their Ranch Rodeo, Mud Bog, and their Chinook Rodeo during that week.
That's it?
That's it, yeah. Yep. So, we were in expenses, so you can see them categorized. And that goes through, we get into down at the bottom. You can see, if you look at the bottom line, it looks like we budgeted a deficit of 1.957 million. But that's the amortization. It's a non-cash expense. So, you can see it's just two lines above. There's 1.957,300 of amortization. So, we, when you factor that in, you will have that loss. Right now, we're still to the good 1.153 million. And that's mostly because we'll record the amortization a little later. So, that's the basic income statement. Is there any other questions on the income statement that I can answer for you? And again, by all means, if we go through the next few months, bring them up and ask questions about them. And the next is your standard balance sheet. So, the balance sheet will show your total financial assets, your non-financial assets, your total liabilities, and then your, and then your balance at the end. Now, in this case, I need to ask Hocken why it's not completely balanced.
Yeah, I can see that.
And I have a feeling it's the depreciation again.
No, they are balanced. So, I said 52, 54, 78, or 930.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was looking year-to-date and, yeah, sorry. Last year and this year, they are balanced. 52, 54, 78, or 930.
Yep.
Yep, not my mistake. So, that's your basic balance sheet. It's very, a ton of stuff grouped into just a few accounts. Any questions on the balance sheet? Okay. And then the last report that you don't get monthly, you'll get on a quarterly basis, is the investment report. And this is something you heard George Cuff bring up, that you should have some idea of where the money is that you say is reserved. So, I need to be able to show you that it actually is, and it's somewhere. So, what you see here is a breakdown of short-term and long-term investments. And the short term is essentially GICs. They're quick to redeem. We run them in 30, 60, 90-day cycles. And that's made up of two major things. It's made up of cash that we had on hand after all the taxes came in, and any grants that we were holding for projects outside the timeline we invested them. So, if we knew we were not expending something for 90 days and we were holding the grant, we would put it away and make a fraction of a percent on it. And so, that's what makes up the short-term investments. You need to remember, for us, we take in almost all of our income in June. And so, instead of just letting it sit in the checking account until we expend it a year later, because we have enough to get us through the whole operating year, we will invest it in different GICs at the bank, and then every 30 days, we get another chunks of cash that comes available for stop operating. And that needs to get us through till next June.
And if you look at the revenues from invest income, we plan on getting $55,000 from those long-term investments.
So, we try to invest it as much as we can. Sometimes, we do have an overdraft at the bank, and sometimes we will run into it because we know it's very short-term. And it costs us less in the line of credit than it would cost us to pull investments. So, we net out better to leave them alone for two weeks than redeem a bond and then have to reinvest when we have the cash coming. So, one of the things that is happening with the town is our income is becoming a little bit, not as volatile, it's becoming a little flatter. Maybe volatile is the wrong word, but in the past, everything came in in June when taxes were due. And now, when we have more people on the prepayment program, we're starting to level out our income. And so, we won't rely so much on circulating GICs because we get income in every month. And people are prepaying their taxes. So, that levels out our revenues. And the utility helped with that too. So, we get our NMAX revenues every month as well. But as you can see, in 2017, we've got 1.12 million that we currently, well, at the end of September, I should say, was sitting in GICs. The one as of November 3rd, so that one's come up and expired. That $112,000 is probably cash in our bank. And the next one is July next year. And then you get into the long-term investments. Now, what you have here is a series of bonds. And there's a reason why it's a series of bonds, and that's because the Municipal Government Act regulates what we can invest in. And they simply must be a certain rating or higher bond. We can't expose the public to a tremendous amount of risk with public funds. So, they don't return a whole lot. And I want to explain a couple of those numbers. If you think we're getting 9.976%, we are not. Let me explain that. But we invest in pretty much double-A or better-rated bonds or other instruments. At the bottom, you can see some protected notes. And that's where the majority of our money lies. Now, this is mostly in restricted reserves. To be frank, we do not have a lot of unrestricted cash. So, at the financial statement last year, if you looked at the audited financial statement, if you took our investments and deferred revenue, so investments, deferred revenue, our cash position basically covered those off. Our cash, sorry, I'm getting the numbers wrong here. I'm gonna come back to that, because I had a note. We basically have enough cash and investments to cover our reserves and deferred revenue. We do not have a lot of extra. Now, restricted reserves, money we're saving for a specific purpose, is as specific as the council of the day determines it to be. To be very frank, it was made by a resolution of council. It can be changed by a resolution of council. But you have to assume there was some reason it was reserved for a specific purpose. And one thing we can provide for you, and we do it at budget time, is you actually have to approve a list of reserves. So, everything we have reserved for what purpose? You'll have to do a motion on that soon. So, what you can see, I just want to explain, if any of you are bond market experts, tell me to be quiet and explain this on my behalf. But the short answer, let's take for a very close example, the CIBC 983,000 at 9.976%. That is the coupon rate at the introduction of the bond. So, if you bought that bond the day it was released and held it until maturity, you could reasonably expect, be expected to return that. We did not and do not do that. So, we look at the yield, which is the YTM number. So, we look at what yield we can expect at maturity of the bond. So, at the time we buy the bond, we don't buy every bond the year one of 20-year bonds released, right? A bank releases a bond, and it could have been in since the 90s, and we jump in now. And so, we look at the number of what yield can we expect at maturity of the bond when we bought it. And it's a bit of a complex algorithm, but the numbers in brackets are essentially those numbers. So, if I go back to the CIBC 9.976% coupon rate bond, we have bought that three different times throughout history. So, at three different times in our history, we purchased it. We expect to redeem 2.78% on one of those purchases, 3.7 and 4.09. And the reason is the value of a bond fluctuates with the market. What a bond's worth today is not what a bond's worth tomorrow. Now, they're relatively stable. That's why we can invest in them. They're not really volatile. They're not, they're not so much a commodity-based stock or anything. But they are stable, and, but they do change. You could buy a $100 bond today, and when it's time to redeem it, it's worth $75. Now, they pay a coupon all that time, so you may get your money back and make a little more. But it's solely market-based, and so those numbers in brackets are complex algorithms getting you as close as can be expected to return on maturity. So, that gives you an idea of what we are investing in. This all comes by the way of, it's managed by Wood Gundy as the company that manages it. Just three weeks ago, for example, Todd from Wood Gundy emailed me and said, Jeff, there's a bond that's been released. They sold some off, so they're putting them back out. The yield is a percent better than what you've got in. We recommend you sell out of this one. It seems to be losing value. Let's bail out. Let's bind to this one. Risk is the same. Here's your expected YTM. And so, we'll make moves on them occasionally. Or what they'll do is if we've got a bond that has increased in value, and there's something to be gained on it, they'll call and say, hey, you should cash out of that right now. For some reason, that bond has got worth more than what it was initially worth. We expect you can receive a little bit more. Get out of it. We'll put you in a different one. So, those are managed and moved. We don't move them much. Maybe once a year, we'd move anything out of one of them. And so, that's what everything's sitting in. And then the bottom simply outlines our long-term debt, which is the one debenture on the Outfall Line maturing in 2021.
It's coming down pretty quick.
Yeah.
And Councillor Self?
So, the long, that's the only debt we have?
We have an unconventional debt with NMAX on the solar. So, they are financing it. We're using our operational costs we had to fund the payment that's equal to the payment, or close to equal to the payment. So, as far as debenture, under what you would have to do, this is probably our most conventional debenture, yes.
Can, can you, on the top of your head, remember the formula for debts to municipalities?
Oh, what is it?
Yeah.
Hold on, give me one second.
It's about 4.5 million for us, I think.
No, we can borrow, I think, up to 11 million.
11 million.
And we can service about 700,000 in servicing costs a year as our ratio.
Yeah.
So, it's a percentage of your, it's a percentage of your, well, for heaven's sake, equalized assessment.
Yeah.
It's your ability based on equalized assessment to.
But essentially, you have to have the capacity to repay it without tax.
Are these maturity dates right? 2107?
You know, I asked that very thing this morning. I said, hey, Hocken, you swapped 2107. It should be 2017. He says, no, in the statement we get, it's actually 2107. So, it's almost an indefinite bond.
So, this is going on over 90 years?
Yeah, so if you wanna hold it that long, you could expect your 10.221% change. Yeah, I asked, I asked the same question this morning. I thought, hey, you've got some formula problems. And he says, it's what it says on the statement. So, it's strange, strange maturity dates. As an aside to this, I've asked Todd from Wood Gundy to plan, to come and present to council how they determine what's appropriate to invest, where they put it away, and come down and make a presentation in the next couple of months to council. So, they're gonna send me some dates on that as well. It's, it's always good to understand what they're looking at and what their constraints are. So, that in a nutshell, councillor, is your financial statement.
So, essentially, councillor, thank you very much, Jeff, for that presentation. What we need to do now is to have a motion to approve two different documents. One, to approve the first part of the document, the financials, and the second one, to approve the investment.
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Ben-Greeb?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement as of September 3rd, 2017.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you very much. So, I need another motion to approve the investments. Councillor Self?
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as of September 30th.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, so that's very good, councillors. And at this point, the committee reports will be presented.
It's the next meeting.
At the next meeting. So, if you can remember to send them, I tried to send you one, but the internet was, was done. So, I'll put it on the stick. Maybe I'll.
You've got two weeks to get it to me.
Yeah.
This stuff is.
Do not, do not, if you receive extensive minutes from your meeting, you can present those minutes. If you feel there's some areas that deserve a little bit of explanation, please give us a paragraph or so to help us understand.
Last week, I attended the Chautauqua meeting with Bill Pevoy. He came separately.
Yes.
Went with Alex. I think we discussed this in council, that Bill Pevoy could be the representative on the Chautauqua.
Right.
The umbrella organization, of course, is the Mormon Trail.
Right.
But the Chautauqua has grown to such an extent that it almost seems like it's a main part of the Mormon Trail. So, rather than me go to those meetings, is it already Bill goes to those meetings, is what I'm asking?
Yes, absolutely. But essentially.
He needs to report back to me, though.
We need to have some sorts of report.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, I just talked to our administrator on that particular subject this afternoon. And I'd like some proposals from, from Jeff as to the direction we go with the Chautauqua and Mormon Trail. And I think it'll be very interesting to find out what that.
Okay, can we give that to Councillor Court since he is part of it, or what?
If I understand correctly, the money is in place for 2018 already, correct?
Uh, yes and no.
But it's, it'll have to be approved in every respective community's budget.
Absolutely.
So, that's part of the budget.
Concerned about that.
No, it isn't.
Councillor, okay, Councillor Ben-Greeb says it is not in the budget at this point, the upcoming budget. I thought we had put in.
Is it there?
I thought we had put money in there.
Yeah.
And there is money for the power in there too, for the same reason. We had, we had approved those.
But if a division goes as planned, then the budget is not covering that division.
Well.
Okay.
What I mentioned, Councillor Ben-Greeb, we have, boy, I must be getting late. Mayors and CAOs meeting in January. And I think this would be a good subject for us to discuss. My overall concern, and then councillor Court's just wading into this, but I think you've probably already seen this, is that the Chautauqua is growing into a bit of a monster that's supposed to be managed by the Mormon Trail Committee. It's supposed to be an integral part of that group. And it's kind of taking this life of its own. And I'm a little, I'm just concerned personally about the long-term financial implication and the sheer volunteer hours needed for this thing. They're looking for eight representatives from every community now to man just that committee.
Eight?
Eight.
Oh, my goodness.
And I've got a number of concerns. And I think there's some good things there. I'm not trying to diminish what they're up to. There's good things there. I just think we, what's happening on the Chautauqua Committee is it's absent of elected representatives because they're on the Mormon Trail Committee. I just think we need to make sure we don't lose that oversight from the elected representatives.
Quite a few of them are also on the Chautauqua Committee.
Okay, so they're doing double duty, huh? Okay.
I have another meeting on Friday. I may show up for that one.
Okay.
And I have Alex attending all those as well. So, I have a bit of an idea of what's going on administratively.
Can I try to understand, is that Chautauqua part of all discussion on the strategic planning or not?
It's not now. And I don't think it needs to be.
All right.
I think we just need to flesh out what the long-term go-forward plan is here.
Okay, all right. So, Councillor Court, if you can keep us abreast of what's going on.
With council's permission, I'll attend another meeting on Friday.
Thank you, absolutely.
I think I need to get a little bit more.
Well, go ahead.
Be wet a little bit.
Go ahead. Well, I think it's okay to tell him to go ahead.
Do we need an extension before we go into that fourth?
Get your mail in, so we can get a bunch of correspondence.
Councillor?
I'll make a motion to extend to.
Put it to nine, so it's.
To nine o'clock?
It won't be up to nine, but it's okay, so we don't have to do it again.
Yeah.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, so essentially, we are done. So, Jeff, when do you want those reports at the latest?
So, I'll always email you the week, so what are we at? So, 10 days from now. So, a week from Thursday. There's one I need to, we'll all be at AUMA, by the way. So, if you have any community reports, get them to me maybe before we're ready.
And the reason why we all have those, those reports, first of all, because in six, in two years' time, some councillors want to change a portfolio. This way, you all inform us what's going on. And it has allowed me, by reading them all, to have a good picture of what's going on around us and to ask questions when I am not clear about something. And those questions are sometime a chance for you as councillors to go back and ask those questions. Councillor Self?
So, if we just forward to Jeff, the minutes from those meetings, is that good enough?
If the minutes are explicit enough, if there is a topic of discussion that you feel we should know a little bit more about, then add sometime. Because just a resolution is not to speak to me, to tell me what the issue really was. So, but we don't need to have a book. Councillor Bance can tell you.
Yeah, I learned we don't need to do books. Just a comment, I was supposed to have a library board meeting on Monday, but going up, but I already told them I'm not gonna be there. And they'll have to send a copy of the minutes. They do.
That's okay.
Do they usually believe in us? I'll ask them to send me a copy as well, please. I just wanna go over it.
I'll have the same issue with the History Society.
It's all right. It's okay. I have an issue also with the mayors and reeves because we only get our minutes the week before the next meeting. But I have written a document because it requires the attention of council. There is about four items where they want to support our municipal. There is about four items where they want to support our municipalities. And so I have written a report and shown whether we are...
Can we, can we review that at the strategic planning?
Yes, yes, I will bring them.
And a motion on that?
Yes.
Does it...
Counselor, sir?
Another question. I noticed in our back, or not our, in our briefing information from the beginning, that there was an economic development committee, and there's, you know, the framework for that committee with who's supposed to be on it, but apparently it's not.
Okay.
It's supposed to be the second Thursday of the week.
Yeah, well, help me, have Jeff help you.
So I'm trying to remember, that changed with the last council.
Yeah.
So what it is intended to be is when council sets strategic priorities, anything that falls under that banner, it's ad hoc to deal with those specific priorities. It's a project-based committee now. So it's not meeting for the sake of meeting? But we, I'm trying to think, we were gonna formalize some terms of reference, and I don't remember if we did.
No, we never.
I'll go over that with you, counselor, and get, get you up to speed on that a little better.
It's a one-page document that outlines who belongs on it.
Yeah, it's the dossier that was for how it was. There was, there was a resolution of council last year. I'll find that for you, we'll get you up to speed on it.
Okay. It's all right? Okay, let's go quickly to the correspondence. So we have a congratulation from the Honorable Doug Black, who is Minister of Municipal Affairs. Lesbish College, same thing. AXIA, an invitation to AUMA reception, you can choose to go there. AUMA update to the resolution processes. And in AUMA, that is something that, there's a letter that they're asking us to write, since we are talking about that. It's about the issue on recycling. So if you look at the recycling issues that have in that packet, try to understand it and then see next council meeting what you intend us to do. Then an invitation to AUMA from RMRF, those are people we deal with. Chinook Foundation, letter of thanks. Stantex, same thing, so hospitality suites, you can go there. Besides that, questions that you need resolved? I believe we have sorted out the way we're going to travel. That's all sorted out, so at this point, I will ask a motion to go in camera. We have three items, one that is under land sale, the other one, a CEO evaluation review.